Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a special city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, January 31st, 2023. The time is 9:00 a.m. We have four items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is Isaac Meyer from Kutaska Community Action for a presentation of proposed housing development in the Fourth Street Corridor of Virginia. So just wanted to let her make a note that all councilors are present, so we do have a quorum. And so we'll begin by introducing Mr. Isaac Meyer and his staff from Kutaska Community Action. And who's on the telephone? Is that Chris Shishmal?
No.
Chris who? Would you turn the...
Chris Flood with Three Rivers Community Action is on the telephone.
Okay, he's part of your group?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And welcome, Mr. Meyer. And please proceed with your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for having us today. We're here today to talk to you with you guys about affordable housing development. Scarlett, if you want to join me up here. We'll get to some introductions quick, but just to give you an outline of the presentation we're hoping to provide you today, we want to go over an introduction and overview of the organizations here proposing this development effort with your communities as well as who we are individually, a brief explanation of the financing device and the type of housing development we work with, that being tax credit, low-income housing, tax credit development, how and what those projects look like, the opportunity you have locally, as well as the next steps that would be available to the community to work with ourselves, should that be something you wish to pursue.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Please.
All right, great. So hi, everyone. My name is Leah Hall. I'm with Three Rivers Community Action. My colleague, Chris Flood, is on the phone. He's actually in sunny Mexico, so we should all be jealous. So briefly, wait, I should probably introduce you. Or you want to wait till Kutaska?
We'll take the next slide.
Okay, great. So just really briefly about me, so you know, I worked for AEOA for about 10 years, doing a variety of housing work for them, everything from crisis housing to developing housing to also homeownership work. So very familiar with the area. I left in 2017 to start work as a Director of Housing Development at Three Rivers Community Action. So I'm wearing that hat right now, and I'll tell you a little bit about our organization. So Three Rivers, we're a community action organization, so we're really a sister organization, if you will, of AEOA and Kutaska. We're part of a community action network that's both statewide and nationwide. So we do a lot of different things. We're all created in the 1960s, basically to end poverty, but then also create opportunities for people to thrive. So we have a variety of programs, and all of us really share this mission-based approach to community development. So Three Rivers is unique as a community action agency because we have an expertise in multifamily housing development. We've done multifamily and single-family development over the years, and since the 1990s, we've developed or preserved over 1,000 affordable housing units. We're actually at 1,038 units. And with that work, we do that primarily in southeastern Minnesota, but the other thing that we do is provide development consulting, if you will, or development capacity building for fellow community action organizations in the state, as well as nonprofits or other communities that want to see affordable housing happen in their community. So with this work, we've invested, it's actually $180 million right now, that have come into these communities that we've worked with, and this is total development costs, if you will, so really the cost to build these affordable housing units. And again, our really, our focus and our approach to housing development is really focusing on local needs and working with people in the community to make that happen, which is why we are here today. We've been working with Kutaska Community Action on their housing development work now for about two years?
Probably longer.
Probably longer, so a few years. And so we're here today as a team to talk to you a bit more about what we do.
Thank you.
So to share a little background about Kutaska Community Action, as Leah said, we are a community action agency. We're based in Itasca and Kuchichin Counties, right next door. Myself and Scarlett Bennett are based in Grand Rapids, Minnesota. We are a newer organization onto the scene for housing development. At this point, our board has been working for about, I would say, two decades on this broader problem that we face in our region, lacking development and developer capacity. Unlike other areas of the state or other areas of the nation, we don't have anyone who's going to come south across the border or who's going to come across Lake Superior and help us get these projects done. So from a very interesting perspective, we tend to lack construction personnel and development builders and capacity. So our organization has long-term been looking at, how do we begin to address this problem? So over about the last eight to nine years, we've been under a longer-term capacity-building effort to position Kutaska Community Action in many ways as Three Rivers is positioned in southern Minnesota as a regional housing developer. Presently, we have an adaptive reuse historic project moving towards construction in International Falls. We're just closing our bids late last week, as well as some community land trust homes we're working on with the Itasca County HRA. In addition to Kutaska's single-family and multifamily efforts, we have long been a major provider of weatherization and rehabilitation services, in many ways similar to the efforts that AEOA does here in your communities. That said, on that broader scale of moving towards a regional housing development agency, we've been lucky enough to have about a $3.25 million investment from the Blenheim Foundation that has allowed us to move beyond our initial service area to help with, work with other communities such as your own. Typically, we like to have a bit longer of a technical assistance and relationship-building process. However, as we'll talk today, there really is kind of a present opportunity for your community, and given the current challenges in the environment, something we want to talk with you about today. For us, much like Three Rivers, when we come to housing here, it's not so much one where, you know, Scarlett or I or our agency is taking back money and doing this for profit, but more so, how are we meeting those local needs? At the end of the day, part of our challenge with a developer shortage in our region is that the market isn't really working to be able to incentivize housing development as you might see in other communities. And that means the core rule for housing is housing isn't built where it's needed or it's most demanded, but where it's most profitable. So when a developer can get 2% more on a project in Brainerd or in the metro area, they're not necessarily making their way up further north. And so that's where Kutaska steps in. I myself have been with Kutaska for almost a decade now. I'm the Housing Development Director there, and I'd love to introduce our associate here, Scarlett.
Morning, everyone. My name is Scarlett Bennett. I am a lifelong northern Minnesotan. I reside in Reamer. I work in Grand Rapids. In conjunction to doing housing development as the Housing Development Associate for Kutaska, I also hold my real estate broker license, so I do a lot of real estate as well. And I can tell you today that this is something that we will go over, and we will make it as palatable as possible.
Thank you.
And if there are immediate questions about the contents of the slides, feel free to jump in, otherwise we've got some great opportunities for yourself to ask a little bit later. Chris, if you would, we're just up to the what are tax credits slide.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Hi, I'm Chris Flood. I work for Leah at Three Rivers. I'm a project manager on these projects. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of background on the tax credit program, how it works, why it's useful, why we're talking about it even today, so that you have that background, as we talk more about the opportunity and entertainment. So first of all, the tax credit program is a federal program. It is a federal tax credit that is given out to each state in a kind of pro-rata fashion, so that each state has a certain number of credits that they can give out. And they give those out to developers based on a state-by-state criteria. And we'll get into that in a bit, but I'm surprised to say that there are a lot more, there's a lot more interest in these tax credits from developers than there are tax credits to give out, so they're very competitive. Generally, there are four applications for every one that is funded in the state. So you have to take the state's scoring criteria very seriously if you want to achieve an award of credits and be able to develop a project. The credits are awarded once a year by the state, essentially. There's a secondary round that's a very small round, is a kind of like just a catch-up, but often that is used to just fill holes in projects that have experienced overruns. So really, the credits are awarded once a year. You apply in July, the state makes its final decision. These days, it's now pushing into January, it keeps kind of moving back, but they make the award at one of their board meetings in either December or January. So it takes a long time to prepare an award, to prepare an application, excuse me, and to wait for the response. It's generally about a year from the time that you commence, like right now, until the time that you hear about an award. And it's not uncommon to, because the rate of success is relatively low, it's not uncommon to have to apply more than once. So it's a very slow process. And that's just to get the funding, then there's time to close and to build the project after that. So why go through all of that trouble? The main reason is the amount of, if you go to the next slide, please, sir. The main reason is the amount of equity that the credit provides. So the credit is a one-for-one reduction in federal tax obligation for the owner of the building. Now, as a nonprofit, Kutaska and Three Rivers are nonprofits, we don't have a federal tax liability. We don't pay federal taxes as nonprofits. However, we admit into the ownership of the property a tax credit investor that is designed to put money into the project cash for equity, and in exchange, they receive the credit. In a normal project, a developer puts in his, their own money as equity and then borrows as much as possible from the bank to pay for the whole cost of construction. And that might be 20% equity and 80% of the project in debt. In order to do that, you have to charge very high rents or have a very large project generally. It's very tough to do that and still have, keep rents low. In fact, it's now gotten to the point where, and this is sort of anecdotal on my part, but it's very difficult to develop anything that you can afford through a sort of standard financing. And what the tax credits allow us to do is have significantly less debt on the project. We're able to use as much as 80% of the cost of the project is paid for with the investors' equity, their cash that they're giving us in exchange for the tax credits. And so the first mortgage on the project, the debt that we actually have to service after we take in rental income and pay our expenses to our property manager and to do maintenance and upkeep, our mortgage is very, very low. So that allows us to set the rents very low as well. So in a sense, the tax credits are kind of a subsidy to the building rather than to individual tenants. It allows the project to be built, it allows a very nice project to be built, and yet not have to earn a tremendous amount of income to service a huge debt because there's a very small loan project. If we go to the next slide, please. So again, I mentioned the priorities that Minnesota Housing sets. Every year, actually every two years these days, they will establish a new set of scoring criteria. Some of those are set just by geography, and so they will publish maps that show areas with what they determine to be high needs for workforce housing, where there's job growth, or need for affordable housing, where the percentage of people with, who are paying more than 30% of their income throughout the whole community seems to be high. They have a whole array of data that they look at, and they create these maps and determine those particular census tracts, usually it's the area that they're looking at, those census tracts that have highest need for affordable housing. And so the projects tend to follow those geographies where the points are high. There, in addition to that, there are some things that the local community can control, and those are local contributions and financial readiness, which are sort of two sides of the same issue. You can either, a community can either provide cash or some form of financial benefit directly to the project, or there can be an in-kind contribution, whether it's, for example, land contributions or partial land contributions, or reductions in fees or eliminations of fees, or any other sort of in-kind reduction in costs to the project is a separate category. So to the extent that a project can get both of those things, they can score more points and be more competitive. The other things that can be done locally are a community development initiative in the right census tracts, provided you're in a high-need census track. You can do extra work to demonstrate the community's commitment to the creation of housing. And if the community, through any number of sources, is able to provide rental assistance, whether it's through the local HRA or some other source, then that is also a great benefit to a project in terms of scoring and its competitiveness. So anytime that we're able, we're hope to partner with communities to find as many of those extra points as possible to make sure that that community is as competitive as possible against all the other communities that are doing things. Thankfully, we're not. In greater Minnesota, we don't compete with the Twin Cities because they have a lot of tools that just don't exist in greater Minnesota. We don't have a, you know, big foundations necessarily, and we don't also have, in Minneapolis and St. Paul, they have their own allocations of tax credits that the cities themselves get and they can give out, which gives them some significant advantages. So the state divides the competition between the Twin Cities and then the rest of Minnesota. So if we can go to the next slide, please. The roles of tax credit developer. So what you might ask, does the developer actually do? We don't, we don't build the building, we don't actually even directly manage it. We hire a professional management company to do that. Our role is primarily understanding the tax credit program, being an expert at how that project, how that program works, and how to design a project that will both operate well and score well so that it receives the points. Three Rivers has developed this expertise, and Kutaska is in the process of developing it now very quickly. And so what we then do is assemble a team of people who really do know what they're doing in their very specific fields, whether it's the architect, the engineers, the property manager who's key, not just during construction, but throughout the project, the service providers, if there are some, and the general contractor. We assemble the capital that's used to build the project, including the complexities of any interim financing versus permanent financing that comes in. We oversee the construction, get the project built, make sure that there are no problems along the way. We take the risk that if there are problems along the way, we will essentially pay for them. So the developer needs to have deep enough pockets that they can, they can right any wrongs financially along the way. If there turns out to be some unforeseen thing in the ground, which is usually what it is, then we have to figure out how to keep that project going and make sure that it can work. And both Three Rivers and Kutaska are in good shape there. And then, once the project is complete, we ensure that through our property manager that lease-up goes quickly and well, and that the project maintains its compliance with all of the many, many layers of regulation that are placed upon it. And we, in doing so, we commit, once we receive the tax credits, we commit to an affordability period and compliance with that period for, these days, 40 years at a minimum. So there's a deed restriction recorded against the property that says that for 40 years, we have to follow these income restrictions. And then with every new source of funding, and there are often multiple sources of funding, there are additional layers that get added on to that. It might typically only be 30 years, but the tax credit limitations, which are significant in and of themselves, are for 40 years. So we're in this for a very long haul, and so we don't mind that at all. We don't have any intention of reselling these projects. It's our mission to create and maintain affordable housing, not to make money off of the projects. And so with that, I'll turn it on to Isaac or Leah.
Mayor?
Yes, one moment, please. Yeah, Councilor Paulson, question?
I do, excuse me, could we back up to that last slide?
Absolutely.
The last bullet point, it says, if the end-owner managed the asset long-term, so is that basically saying that the end-owner is open or up for grabs?
Not really. What that's referring to is the opportunity that developers often take to develop this housing turnkey, where essentially we might come in to develop it for someone else. As soon as, you know, we've completed the development, ensured the project is up and operating, back out and then have another entity take over that project, such as an HRA or maybe an organization that has just paid upfront to support that effort.
Could you give maybe some further examples of some past experiences in other communities?
Yeah, so Chris actually could speak to this. He did a project with Three Rivers or for Three Rivers with Tri Valley Community Action out of Crookston, where he worked with them to develop a project that they then were the end-owner, not Three Rivers. So we were simply assisting them and making that project happen, and they were the long-term owner. So this is more for someone like Three Rivers, where in this example as well, if a project were to be developed between Three Rivers and Kutaska's work together, Kutaska would be the end-owner and we would not. So Kutaska would actually be required to comply with all of these requirements, and it's actually 50 years now, so for 50 years.
Instead of 40. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Please continue, sir.
Certainly. And I would note, about eight years ago, Kutaska's first Lytec project was one where it was turnkey for our local HRA, working with another for-profit developer. And to that note, one thing we do find it important to note here is both Kutaska and Three Rivers Community Action, we're nonprofit, locally-based development organizations. And it's important to note that, at the end of the day, the tax credit program accounts for about 40% of all multifamily starts in the nation, and it is simply an open competition among for-profit and nonprofit entities. Typically, where it comes in to note the importance of nonprofit entities, we have that longer mission-based drive to own and maintain these buildings. At the end of the day, Kutaska's not going to go anywhere. People are able to find us. In 40 years, we will still have a presence in our communities. For those for-profit developers, typically they have a different type of exit strategy built into when they would see themselves leaving that project because of the type of properties they own or their approach to their own income streams. Particularly for us, I think this is important to note, is that we have a long-term approach to how are we going to work with and build support in our communities? Because these projects, you know, each take between four to five years to accomplish, and we know that what really is important in our region is a strong pipeline for our communities to know where they have land, where they have availability, where do they want to be seeing multifamily housing developed? And so for us, it's very much a garden cultivation strategy for the entire region we're going to be working in, because, and I'll note, Deer River, for example, is one community where, as they've been planning a subdivision for about the last three years, we've been sitting down, meeting with them, talking about the needs and what can be done to simply plot out some of those spots. You know, if you put in a four-acre section here, you mark it down and your zoning is multifamily, in four, five years, when you actually build that and have utilities, us or another developer or maybe a senior housing provider can come in and make that happen. It's a little different approach than for-profit developers, where typically their strategy begins with site acquisition, purchasing control, waiting for market forces to change, or, as Chris was describing earlier, the state's housing priorities to become favorable for those sites. In our approach, it's a little bit different in that we really do need to be invited in and want to work with that kind of collaborative attitude, as ultimately we have many communities in the area we're serving that we're kind of having these same conversations with. And unfortunately, being that we are so strapped for development capacity overall, it really is that determining factor for where we do come in and do find work to do. And it has to ultimately be something that's needed and can rent up, as much as we'd like to build whatever we wanted. To move a little more towards what are these projects like, I wanted to show this slide here, I think it's an important one. So what makes a Lytec project or low-income housing tax credit project what it is, ultimately comes down to the way that it restricts who can live there and the way that it restricts how the owners can charge rent. Ultimately, it's important to note, these projects do charge rent, and people have to be able to afford them. It is very much so the case that, you know, maybe opposed to more traditional subsidized or public housing, in these models, as Chris said, the subsidy is with the building. So it provides us equity to ensure we have a smaller amount of debt service that allows us to then charge a lower amount of rent. You can see up there our rent limits. Now, it's important to note, for a Lytec project, that's the absolute maximum. We begin for any project, taking out whatever utilities we're going to charge that tenant. So if we have tenant-paid electric, the local HRA has a payment standard that it has determined is what that tenant should have marked off their rent. So in that case, we're going to be coming down from that higher rent limit, and even more so than that, we're ultimately looking at typically about 90% or less of what's market achievable. So when we move forward with a project and we've determined it's going to be, say, 40 units, X number of one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms, we've set our amenity mix, we'll work with a professional market study firm who will go through the process of providing comparables, noting what those rents are in the market, and essentially to ensure to our investors that local folks can afford those rents, that those rents will be accepted and we won't have a vacant building, we typically set ourselves and our rents at least 90% of achievable. So if we could get $1,000 for a two-bedroom, we're typically going to be at $900 because our primary concern typically is ensuring our investors get their return, because at the end of the day, they're providing the vast majority of the equity for the project. So ensuring the building lasts, is in good condition, and can achieve our rents is kind of key. What you'll see on the other side, across from the rents, is the income limits. Essentially, as the state sees this, we are providing housing for those folks who would probably be those families that, were they able to save up funds, were they able to afford their housing, are going to move on to those other types of housing products, like a single-family home. And I think we all kind of know with how challenging it can be to find a place to rent or to live, or that the prices are particularly high, it's difficult to be able to save up that funding, especially if you're working at maybe an entry-level job, or if you're working at, say, essential health, and I'll go on to our next slide, but...
May I please have a question before we move to the next slide? As you look at these income limits and rent income limits, so say, say, just an individual, say, for just a sake as an example, has a rent of $960 a month, as your example here. And so that individual stays in the apartment for five years. Does that individual, does that rent stay the same, or whoever manages the thing determines, based upon a new study of the market rate, may increase that? And then the second part of that question is, the person who has $960 based on a specific income, and their income triples, as I say, for example, as a worst, you know, as an extreme case, they will still pay the same amount of rent, they would never increase or decrease. So that's a two-part question.
Thank you, so I'll take that one. So the rent limits do change, and they're really based on HUD. So the federal government sets these rent limits. They change about every year, sometimes by a few bucks, sometimes by a little bit more, it just really depends. But to Isaac's point, it's a little bit of a balance, because although those rents may increase over time or fluctuate, we haven't seen them go down in the last few years, but they may fluctuate over time. You also have to balance whether or not you can adjust those rents. So for Three Rivers, for example, we operate over 500 and some units, we own those units. We have the option every year to increase rents to a certain respect, and we don't opt to do that every year because it doesn't make sense in every market. So to give you a good example is, let's say the rent maximum increased by $50, that might not make sense to do that in the community, so instead, it might be a $20 rent increase. So that is a little bit more of a project-by-project decision depending on the market, so kind of a complicated answer to your question, but go ahead.
And then, so the last question then would be, as a follow-up, $960 a month, and the person's staying for two, three, four, five years, and there's a new increase the cost associated with the rent, and pretty soon it comes to the point where the individual's income decreases, but the rent stays the same. And so, and the rent goes up, or the rent stays the same, the income drops significantly, can't afford to live there anymore, what's the, what happens then?
Yes. Yeah, so these rents are independent of the person's income in this scenario. These are not... These are not subsidized, these units that we're talking about right now. You can add rental subsidy to these projects, but if you take that away and just say, if you had no rental assistance, this is what the rents could be. So if someone's income increases or decreases while they're still living there, it wouldn't impact the rents. People who come into these projects, their income certified one time for tax credit compliance. Sometimes it gets a little muddy if you've got other type of assistance in these projects, where they might have to income certify more than that. But for the most part, you could come in, be of modest income, still be able to pay your rent, get certified to live there, and then if you get a better job or you have a promotion, well, that's great for you, and your rent stays the same.
So the last follow-up, for clarity for me.
Yes.
So the income goes down significantly. And so the question is, if they can't pay, they need to find some other financial assistance. So where, what are the financial assistance programs that are available for these individuals so they can stay in their apartment?
Yeah, good question. So that's another really great reason why working with a nonprofit developer like Three Rivers or Cootaska makes sense, because we are really tapped into the local resources. So we know what places have, for example, Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Programs, FHPPAP, which can pay back rent if someone's falling behind. There are different rental assistance programs that are short-term, and there are some that are very long-term. So perhaps it's getting them on the HRA Section 8 list, or, you know, other. So we do do that. We work in partnership with property management to help folks as we can. But ultimately, somebody, if their income drops, they may have either a temporary or a longer-term assistance. But it also functions like market rate in certain ways. That rent has to be paid.
Sure, so then my comment is that it does act, when you get to that point, it does act like a subsidized housing for short-term or long-term based on some assistance from some other entity that helps them pay their rent. It's not the exact same program, I understand that, but it's still, the concept is the same.
It's actually not. What I mean to say is that what we would do out of being a nonprofit is if we're able to refer someone to assistance, we would do that. But I want to be really careful here to say that they are operated by a professional property management firm. So let's say, for example, Isaac fell behind on his rent, and I found that out. I might call the property management firm and say, hey, did you hand Isaac this flyer about family homeless prevention and assistance programs, or other things that he can apply for? They would do that, and if Isaac does not apply for that assistance and doesn't pay his rent, then we move down the eviction route, just like a market rate project does. They have an opportunity to pay. They can also do a payment plan, if that's something that they're willing to do. But for the most part, the rent has to be paid.
Very good, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. Okay?
It's very much the case that Lytec is meant to incentivize people to work and increase their income. Being nonprofits, we do have that much deeper connection to what's available for support. And typically, you know, that is the first approach, to try to help people increase that income, increase their independence, you know, better be able to, you know, grow their personal wealth and assets. But for someone who loses their income, doesn't make steps, doesn't replace that income, they're going to be evicted just as you would in any market rate apartment. That is, you know, the ultimate kind of end-all for these is that they're not individually subsidized, and as their income goes down, they would eventually face eviction.
So my last question is, last one, I promise. So an individual with an income of $40,000 a year pays this rent, and a person with income of $30,000 pays the same rent, or the same apartment, everything's the same, that this person makes more money, but there's a limit on what they pay, right?
So they're both gonna pay, say they moved into a one-bedroom apartment at the same time, they would both pay that $960?
Regardless of income.
Regardless of income. So if one individual started making $100,000, they're still gonna pay $960 just as you would at a market rate apartment. If that other individual started making $20,000 exactly as a market rate apartment, they're gonna pay $960. The goal is ultimately to ensure that we have housing available for people in these incomes. So if I might, if you looked at a family of two moving into an apartment in this community, we'd have an income limit of about $1,150. You take out utilities, you drop it down a little, maybe they're paying about $1,000 in rent. You know, if, looking at some of the other apartments in town, it's like the Park Villa Apartments over in Mountain Iron, built in 1976, they're renting for about $1,100 for that same unit. This unit's going to be a little more affordable, but ultimately, that market rate apartment might have no availability because anyone of any income can move in there. Where that income limit side comes in is that if you had a two-person family making $100,000, they're not going to be able to move in. But if they're a young family, if they're, you know, just getting started in, you know, say the trades, or whatever their career path is, they're able to get established, build that base, increase their income over time, still pay the same rent as anyone else would as a market rate, but that unit is essentially reserved to folks working in these types of income ranges.
So when you take an application for a rental place, those factors are taken into consideration before you rent to someone, is that correct?
Yes, so we contract with professional property management firms, and it is a very similar application process to any other rental. They do background checks, they ensure the income qualify, and so on.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you. Any other questions at this point from the council? So thank you, Mr. Meyer, please continue.
I just want to make one quick comment, just to kind of loop this all together. So if you were taking a little snooze while we were going through tax credits and all of that funding, the reason why I had Chris go into that kind of great detail about what these tax credits are and how they work is that this really all ties into how we're able to have these rents at a lower rate, right? So we're not carrying debt, as Chris had mentioned, like a market rate project, but rather, we have equity, we have cash investment in these projects. So we're only having to pay back a mortgage that is significantly less. So that's why these rents can be controlled down and controlled down over the long term, for the life of the project.
Thank you.
And I think probably most important, right, these, I don't know what these numbers mean, but I think it's key to look at what are jobs in the community, and what would they look like in relationship to a project like this? Ultimately, this is very much kind of a core set of our workforce range in the communities. For those folks who are probably making, you know, over $30 an hour, maybe $40 an hour, you've got a lot of options when it comes to either purchasing a home, maybe getting one built, or finding some of the higher, well, we don't have as great of a stock of rental housing, but finding some higher-cost housing, you know, it's much more affordable. But looking at the types of jobs that are, you know, on Indeed or Minnesota Job Board today, I think is helpful, and, you know, to share some for perspective, you can see Hylean Solar, obviously making a large expansion in their operations and efforts. An assembler there would qualify for this project, that base range of about $18 to $19 an hour. Delta Airlines, another. And so as you look at family size, just imagine that someone could qualify for that two-bedroom apartment, but if they had maybe three or four kids, they're going to be able to qualify for more because they can afford the rent, even though their family is larger. But if someone had, say, to look at the correctional officer for St. Louis County, they're making $25 an hour. You know, if they've got a family of four, they'd be able to qualify for one of the three bedrooms or maybe four bedrooms. But if it was just that individual themselves, they would make too much to qualify for a one-person unit. That said, and we'll talk about it later, we are targeting large family housing with this project, having more than 75% or more of our units be two-bedrooms plus, because really that's what we see in the market for the need. It's families need places to live. So we've got also a couple jobs up there with the city of Virginia. Called Chief Frederickson, talked with them yesterday, kind of what they're paying for the fire department. Those are typically, you know, very close wage ranges for what this type of housing can support. So you've got a new paramedic in town making $36,000 a month. This would be the type of housing essentially geared towards that individual as hopefully they move on further in their role. Maybe they can complete some of their NFPA training, become a firefighter, maybe a hazmat specialist, and ultimately move up the ranks within your own department, perhaps become an officer. And then eventually, the goal is to move out and find that next set of housing. Perhaps they grow their family, they get a spouse, they have kids. Obviously, they're probably gonna want to move on to that one-bedroom at that point. So really, it is this incentive for folks to kind of have, you know, an incentive to work, but then also have a safe, stable base where they can grow that wealth and personal asset that they're gonna need to move into that next housing product for them and their family.
Which with that guideline then, a person could either be, even if they choose, they have the income to move on to get another apartment or buy a house, but they could choose to stay regardless of income, correct?
Correct.
Right, thank you.
So to talk a little bit more specifically about what we're looking at for a Lytec project and what Lytec projects are like, we've been showing you some pictures of projects that are low-income housing tax credit across the state. At the end of the day, what's maybe kind of the core understanding for these projects are is the subsidy comes to the project itself. Being able to pay for something today, rather than across 30 years with the mortgage, allows us to do a number of things that ensure these projects and properties look good over their lifetime. To maybe give a little historic background on this, our Congress and our nation has really played with the various ways we fund projects and refund housing. There's obviously been challenges to some of the designs and housing qualities that have come out from various different types. And the low-income housing tax credit projects are really designed to be appealing and to have the capital we need today to make investments so we can have those projects last long-term. Particularly being affordable housing developers that are nonprofit, we also then have that opportunity, not reinvesting those assets and to our own personal enrichment, to keep them with the project. So when we're looking at a project that's $14 million to $18 million total development cost, we're typically getting, as Chris said, maybe 80% of that equity today. So that might be $10 million that we have to pay for that construction while it's occurring. Now, that might be a market rate project that was 80% debt, you're gonna have a $10 million loan. Obviously, with the cost of credit the way it is right now particularly, you're probably not gonna have a project. But, you know, maybe a year ago, when your cost of credit might have been 3%, 3.5%, you're paying that on your $10 million loan. Having that higher equity-to-debt ratio allows us to have those better investments in things like quality and long-term construction techniques that are going to give us properties with those higher-level appeals. So to move on from that point, we're looking at ultimately large family housing. This both is done because of the need in the community, but also because this is what Minnesota Housing is saying has to be built, essentially. In many ways, they're very prescriptive on where they want to invest, what is essentially some of the most prized incentives they can provide to the market to create housing. And what they're saying is, we want folks to build large family housing. So for us, if we were to build a, say, a 40-unit project, you'd be looking at 10 one-bedrooms, 20 two-bedrooms, six three-bedrooms, and four four-bedrooms. Typically, in the pattern of housing development across our nation, you mostly saw one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, if ever any three or four bedrooms built. And often, you might have seen 50, you know, one-bedroom apartments and maybe two or three two-bedrooms in a development. Having this mix also allows, what I would say is for a better community approach and atmosphere, having families, having that more typical mix of community as you would in any single-family neighborhood. Rarely do you see, you know, 40 one-bedroom homes in a neighborhood, right? So our projects, being large family, then to better reflect what is, I would say, a more common development style on the affordable housing side that also mirrors what our kind of natural neighborhood developments are. Presently, we're in talks with Trellis Property Management for management of this property. They are our property management for our Alexander Baker Project, International Falls. That's a 27-unit adaptive reuse, just beginning construction here this spring. They have about 4,000 units that they manage. They are owned, they are a for-profit themselves, but they are owned by a nonprofit developer, Trellis Co., who is based out of the Twin Cities, but also has a number of developments in this region, including Hibbing. That said, it's important to note, we are going to have onsite property management at least half-time, and would also have onsite service coordination as well to help ensure our tenants have access to those wealth-building tools.
And that is if there's not an HRA involved in this process, right?
Even if there were an HRA involved, we would still need a professional property manager. Most HRAs don't manage Lytec properties, and you really do need the right type of management to ensure success, and there's a lot of compliance. So typically, the lender doesn't allow... So we've got Wells Fargo for one of our lenders on a project. They'd never let Cootaska manage that property, even though we manage some of our own apartments already. They wouldn't trust us, and we want someone else to do it in any case.
Thank you, thank you.
Almost certainly, this is going to be some sort of multi-story development. We know land is not easily come by, especially in our landlocked mining communities like Virginia, Nashwauk, Coleraine, and others. How many stories is ultimately dependent on city zoning. You do have some height restrictions, and also the lot size and shape. Ultimately, we'll be looking to see how much you guys want to work with us to move forward, and we would invest in our engineering and architecture work to be able to determine what a site suitability is, what would be buildable, what's going to meet your building requirements. For us, it's kind of crucial to have these long-lasting architectural touches and finishes that you're going to see, because we intend to own these buildings for the long term. We're not going to be selling it early or intending to make a profit off of that land and building sale, but rather to keep that building in the community as an asset that allows us to help build our portfolio as we build more units across the region. We are also bound both by a common sense in saving money on our utilities, but also by some of the state's requirements to do energy-efficient building methods and systems. We may also have some solar options, depending on some tax credits coming up for that to assist us. But big picture is, these buildings are being long-term investments. We want to ensure that they're easy and affordable for us to operate with our energy use. And for this project, being a large family, we are going to build a playground with it, or if we're near enough to another space in a community, we could utilize that, though it really depends on the ultimate site we would come to. And Leah, Chris, come on up and...
Yes, we just wanted to show you, you've been looking at some images along the way. We just wanted to show you a couple other images here, just to get an idea of what these look like. If you didn't know it, you wouldn't know that these are affordable housing or funded to be affordable housing. So I want to show you, this is some images of a project through Rivers completed a few years ago now, a couple, a few years ago, in Austin. This is Fox Point Townhomes, large family units. You can see, as Isaac was mentioning, just really high-quality finishings, a place you and I, anyone else, would want to live. Just really attractive, and we do different things to make sure they last a long time. Minimum carpet, especially with family units, high-grade appliances, things like this, so that they last for a long time, so we aren't replacing them constantly. Got two more slides, then we'll pause, so you can ask us some more questions. We're throwing a lot at you, so I'll make these next two kind of brief. But just really quickly, so you know how this works. You know, we were talking, and Chris went through a bunch of priorities that Minnesota Housing has to get these projects funded. One of the things that they do to really decide where is they have a community profile, as they call it. So essentially, it's a map that has a bunch of different data that's feeding into this map that shows things like, is there a need for affordable housing? Is there a workforce transit, and so on and so forth? So they kind of ping on this map, different communities that are high priorities. And right now, Virginia is one of those high priorities. It scores, geographically scores out very well in all of these categories. And especially because the downtown core is in a qualified census tract. Or in other words, it's been flagged as a location that is really in need of affordable housing. So last slide before we pause here. We've talked about this, whittled this in kind of throughout, but really, the bottom line is, in order for these projects to be fundable, for us to bring in the millions of dollars that is private equity that make these projects possible, we do have to leverage local resource. So if you can imagine, and we've listed a bunch of these here, these are different things that communities we work with are able to do. So some communities are able to do tax increment financing, some can donate land. We look for community contributions if there's a local employer that can provide that, even if it's a small amount, do we have something that we can show? And so really, ultimately, when we put this little bullet point, scoring points versus buying points, I'm not quite sure how to say this the best way, but there are certain things that we cannot change. So we can't change geography. The good thing is, like I said, Virginia scores out well, but you can't change some of those things, and you can't necessarily change sort of the general makeup of what these projects look like. But what you can do is you can really tip the scale in your favor by doing things locally. And all of these different sources we'd mentioned, and on top of that, being able to bring in some local project-based rental assistance, if that is possible for some of the units, that can make a big difference as well. So I like to tell people, this is sort of the pay-to-play piece of it. And as Isaac had mentioned, you know, the local contribution that is a big deal... And as Isaac had mentioned, you know, the local contribution that is a big deal locally is a much smaller amount of the project compared to what that very important local contribution can do to leverage millions of dollars in private equity.
So I have a question. You probably, I might be premature.
That's great.
So you have a site that you want, right? Are you coming to that?
So that is the next, yes.
Okay.
So we would like to mention a site. We're calling it the preferred site, and Scarlett's going to float that by you here and hear what your thoughts are. But as, you know, Isaac had mentioned too, sort of in the beginning of all of this, is that this is something that we're asking to see if you're interested in doing. We are not presuming that you are looking for more affordable housing, so. So I wanted to pause for a quick sec before I go a little bit deeper into that comment to see if there are any questions about this whole mechanics of this, anything that you want me to clarify before we start wrapping it up.
Sure. I believe we do first, we'll go to Councilor Paulson, then over to Councilor Motley. Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just jotting some notes down. So just from the understanding, so the nonprofit that will be owning, it's an ownership, the nonprofit owns the asset?
So it's actually a limited partnership. I won't get too deep into this because this starts getting down a rabbit hole. But so essentially, what we do is we create an entity that partners with this private investor. So the investor that's bringing in the millions of dollars partners up with us, and we own this project as a limited partnership. So it is not a nonprofit entity, and we do that for a variety of reasons, but we also can leverage TIF as a limited partnership, a private entity.
Okay, so it is a, at the end of the day, then it's a for-profit operating entity?
Correct.
Okay, so that wasn't necessarily clear with what, how you were describing that?
Yes.
So who are the partners that come to the table, and are they using tax credits to partner up with your nonprofit?
Yeah, so we work with a variety of syndicators. That's what they're called, fancy word, right, for the investor. So in a nutshell, if you can picture this, these syndicator firms are experts in figuring out what projects are a good investment. And so behind them, they have these funds, these investment funds. So they take these investment funds, and they find a really good partner and a really good project. And so right now, Three Rivers works with a variety of syndicators, but we usually select nonprofit syndicators. So one, for example, is Midwest Housing Equity Group, or MEG. Another one is Minnesota Equity Fund, which is a Minnesota-based syndicator investor firm. And National Development Council is another. But I think ultimately, the point is, is that these entities that are coming in, they're vetting these projects to make sure that they are going to be high-quality and that we are trusted as a partner because they are really in the backseat. Once they put their cash in, what they want to do is stand back and let us operate that project. They don't want to have anything to do with the daily operations. And so that's why this professional property management firm and all of these layers really come into play.
Okay, so if we could back it up, so you just said you go in, you form an LLC partnership, limited liability partnership, is that what you had said? But first, you said for-profit, now you're saying majority are nonprofits. So which is it? Because I'm trying to determine, is the city going to be able to have any tax fees?
Yes. So ultimately, this project will pay property taxes for the entire effort. So what makes tax credits work is having a tax liability. So at the end of the day, the federal government says, if you build this housing, if you invest your money in this, we will reduce your federal income tax liability. And so we make a for-profit limited partnership entity that's going to be that investor partner, as Leah mentioned, and then ourselves as that nonprofit. Now, that incentive that the IRS provides ultimately pays out over 10 years and has a 15-year liability window. So that limited partner typically sticks around for 15 years till they get all the money out that they invested. So they, we're going to get, say, $10 million in tax credits. Today, I'm going to turn to an investor and say, hey, I'll sell you this for 90 cents on the dollar. If you give me $9 million now, you're going to get $10 million over 10 years. And so then with that for-profit entity, this project will always be paying those property taxes and is in that type of relationship.
Thanks for the clarification. Then Leah, I'm going to go back, if I may, to the end asset owner. So would that end up being an HRA? Who would that, what is the end actual owner in terms of the liability to the commitment of, to the city of Virginia?
Yeah, so Three Rivers has owned, we'll use us for an example. So we've owned projects that, you know, we had a couple now, well, several, where our syndicator partner has exited. So they're only in the deal with us for 15 years. They leave, and Three Rivers owns this project for the next 30, 40 years. Now it's up to a 50-year compliance period. So similar to what Cutasca is planning to do, we are ultimately owning these projects over the long, long term. So in the end, any project that Cutasca does will have the same setup.
Okay, so who is being the, I'm sorry, this feels a little confusing.
It's wonky.
Cutasca and the Three Rivers, you know? So are you partnering, or is it one entity or the other that the city of Virginia would be entering into a negotiation with?
So ultimately, Cutasca is going to be that long-term owner. We're partnering on the development with Three Rivers to have that additional development support and capacity. These projects take an enormous amount of work, and we all have multiple projects spinning at one time. So by leveraging multiple entities, we're able to kind of accomplish all the various pieces that need to be done. And we want to have Cutasca, and this is kind of the core thing, be that long-term partner and owner because it allows a community to have a group that's accountable, right? You can know who my board of directors are, you can call them up, you can have that conversation to say, hey, your project over here is getting raggedy, or what is going on, right? We have that local accountability, and that's crucial. It also, though, means that we've got that local market sense and local market presence to know what's going to work. And it gives us that advantage over, I'd say, developers from other areas, often metro areas that are looking maybe for, you know, you might well have a developer come from Chicago and say, hey, you guys are a qualified census tract, you're attractive, we want to come and build here. What I might tell you guys is the advantage is, if you work with Cutasca, you at least know we're never going to run off, we're not going anyplace, and none of us are going to be richer or have an incentive to maybe cook the books for the community when it gets to any of our parts of this project like TIF. So that's what we want to offer you.
And I think that's the end result that I'm trying to, you know, if we've got a 50-year commitment, that is it, is that a federal, is it federal?
That would be Cutasca's commitment to ensure for 50 years that we're compliant with what we've promised.
Does the state have a certain requirement for length of time?
Yeah, so what ends up happening, Minnesota Housing has established, they want to encourage developers to ensure compliance over a long period of time. So what they do is they actually record a restrictive covenants against this project, showing that you must comply with these 20 things.
Would that include like reinvestment at year five or year 10?
You have to pass annual inspections, you have to have a high-quality project. They also make sure, and the way we underwrite these or structure these projects, is that every year, we're putting in wads of cash into the capital replacement reserve. And ultimately, you know, and Cutasca, we've talked about this quite a bit, is that ultimately, we want each project that we have to be a great look back because we want to keep doing this work. So we have to make sure that after 16, 17, on and on years, we can point to that project and tell other communities, look at how great this is, don't you want it?
And there's reasons I'm asking these questions because of maybe some past history that has occurred in the city of Virginia or even in the Quad Cities. So what I'm trying to ensure or assure is that, is that there will be that commitment with reinvesting in the, whatever the criteria is going forward, where we've had people made commitments, and then we end up in a very bad situation with a population that's very needful, and it just gets more dilapidated, more dilapidated, and eventually, it's either a condemned or something happens, or, and then it needs to be demolished, it's on the city's dime. So I guess what I'm trying to determine is the end owner. And I know Dana's here with our HRA, and she can attest to how hard it is to balance the books when you've got mechanical HVAC systems going, elevators, the whole nine yards. So, so anyway, I guess what I'm just trying to understand is, your long-term plan that includes a maintenance overall for the length of that 50-year commitment?
Yes.
That the city would not have to worry that, that that commitment would fall on deaf ears of an organization who should be around for a long time?
Yes.
Is that what you're committing to?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and you know, it goes beyond just a commitment. There's several layers of oversight to the developers and owners on these projects. And, you know, it starts with our investor partners as well. They're going to be getting the books every month, and if we're not putting aside that required amount, you know, that's the first, you know, notice or flag that's going to go up. And then beyond that, it's Minnesota Housing, and beyond that, it's the IRS. So there are, you know, many layers to ensure compliance and guarantee these projects happen. Ultimately, as the government would say, we're giving you this equity to make a project happen, and they don't mess around when you abuse that.
Sure. Last question, Mayor.
Yeah, please, Councilor Paulson.
So in Essentia's support letter, they discuss, they discuss the need for their employees to have affordable housing, and then they also discuss their locums, physicians, or nursing staff that comes and goes, that travel in and out. They use the term long-term and not short-term. So these units are focused on long-term rental, not short-term rental, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And is there any room in your plan ever changing to include short-term rental?
No, it's ultimately, that's just too much risk to the project. You know, vacancy and turnover in units means units that aren't rented. These projects do have debt, and we want to have a good cash flow and good books. So for us, you know, the best thing is to have as little vacancy as we can.
Yeah, and compliance-wise, it's not allowed, so.
Okay, so the city would be guaranteed that that would not be a, like a short-term?
Correct. It cannot happen. Yep.
Okay. And then if Essentia goes forward, like they would be the leasing?
No, they have to be leased, no, they have to be leased by individuals. Again, blah, 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 tax credits.
How would that work, though? If Essentia has those locums physicians that come in, and sometimes it's locums nursing staff, and locums means traveling. So how would that work? If that's a need that Essentia's putting forward in support of this project, how would that work in order to assist that healthcare entity to assure that their physicians or whomever is coming and going? A lot of ER doctors come and go on locums. So how would that assure that that's going to accommodate that need for Essentia?
So the answer is partly twofold. And the first is much to do with the environment that we're in for housing. If we can imagine housing as a cycle, you know, people move through different products over their lifespan. Typically, I would say in our region, we're suffering in two main areas. The first is senior housing, people 55-plus. What are those units, people who maybe own their homes, are going to move into? How does someone go from a two-story house with a basement that they're really only using the main floor on to maybe a one-level, lower-maintenance product that they can manage? And that's one of those areas where we're really struggling. The other area is this kind of affordable space, these working families having that product that they can afford and use to build up their wealth. Having those ultimately helps make a stronger market when it comes to our single-family homeownership products, as well as our market rate rentals. And I would say it's kind of important to understand this from the perspective that the fewer units we have on the market and the fewer new construction units we have on the multifamily side, the less incentive market rate developers have to reinvest into their properties. And it's important to note this because we have a community here that has a college. And if there's one thing that college kids do is they'll rent anything, and they can drop the bottom out on your market quality. So having new developments on the affordable side, because those incomes, those people who are going to be, you know, say it was that firefighter in town, he could rent at, you know, Park Villa Apartments or Meadowbrook, or he could rent here. You know, it creates competition in a marketplace where those other apartments were built in 1976. I don't know what those landlords are doing for investment, but speaking on that broader scale of like what makes a healthy environment, and it goes beyond just, you know, any city, right? We have regional market for housing because people can travel, they can drive. So it makes a market healthier by having newer units built and new units constructed, and it also addresses, you know, a very real need for those nurses who are actually going to be living here long-term. It's not necessarily that those locums nurses may be the ones living there, if they're going to be here for a couple of years, absolutely. But more so, I would consider it in this broader scheme of what do we need to do for housing? The answer is everything. The challenge becomes, though, in the current credit environment we have, and if you remember this slide earlier, we're likely going to see another drop like this. Cost of credit is rising. When I talk with banks, when I talk with lenders, their costs to lend to us is going up. It used to be, you know, two and a quarter points over the sofa, you know, the standard overnight financing rate, and we saw what that did, right? You know, it just...
My question, if I might redirect my question?
Please.
Is that, is that able to even happen, then? If they have certain criteria, will it not be met or will it be met if they're having locums physicians, which is what part of their, their language is in their letter of support?
Scarlett?
So to address what you're redirecting, Madam Counselor, is Essentia has, in a sense, identified that housing does play a significant role in the health of people. Now, if we look at the amount of positions that are currently open with Essentia, they have over 129, and this is prior to their virtual job fair that they had. So when we speak with them, yes, they've addressed the need for locums. However, when we go back to these income limits, unfortunately, for some of those nurses that are traveling for three, six, and nine-month terms, they are out of that wage range. However, when they do have, you know, the assistant roles, and they're below that 28, 25 kind of income level, that can come in and qualify. It's not to say that there isn't future potential, where if we have enough employer buy-in within a community that we couldn't provide something. But for at this point, Essentia has agreed and identified that housing is a massive need for the entire community. That's the aim of their letter.
The end paragraph really is a mute point because it can't happen.
In a sense, yes. In a sense, right.
Okay.
And that's kind of where, you know, like we say, in the future, if Essentia says, we need housing and we need a developer, that can happen. But their main basis for now is saying, hey, we see that there is a need for Virginia, and we support it.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Councilor Motley?
I was just curious, how many communities have you made a presentation like this to across the state, and how many have actually come on board?
So the, what I want to maybe note is, I'm foreseeing capacity for us to bring one application through the full process of pre-development. It probably costs about $50,000 to $80,000 in external fees beyond our own staff time to develop everything that's required for an application. And essentially, when we put in an application, we've completed enough development process to say, if we get money, we think we can make this possible. The other communities we're talking with very directly right now are the city of Grand Rapids and Cohasset. I've also had presentations and conversations with councils in Nashwauk, Kiwattan, and staff in Deer River and other communities.
So is I Falls the only one that's taked on so far with building?
That project is funded and is moving towards construction. So that's, as we look at our pipeline, it's, you can consider projects that don't yet exist like this, and you could look at projects that are essentially in that process of construction moving towards lease-up. And that's where I Falls is, so, yes. So they are fully bought on, and that project is moving towards sticks and bricks.
And how old is your oldest building that you've constructed?
So the building that we're working on currently is 1914.
Okay.
So that's an adaptive reuse.
Wondering on a project like this, that's been going on, that you already created and you're running, what's the oldest one that you, that you are, I guess, running?
So presently, our challenge right now that we have in the environment is, we don't have any existing nonprofit rural regional housing developers with Lytec properties. So I've worked on two previous projects. Cutasca has our first project in construction right now.
Which is I Falls.
Which is I Falls.
We actually don't know how this would play out running forward. I Falls will be the first.
So this is where we come into play. This is why Three Rivers is at the table. If it wasn't, if, if Cutasca had the experience that Three Rivers has, they wouldn't need us. So we're part of this project team because of that. So our oldest project right now is tax credit project only, is 17 years old. We have some that are much older that are not tax credit, but 17 years is our oldest tax credit project, and we have, I think it's 534 units on the ground right now that are up and running. So, and we've got one, another project that is, well, we have two projects under construction and one that was just funded. So this is an ongoing, long-term thing that Three Rivers has done. And so what our game plan is here with Cutasca is to help them continue... And so what our game plan is here with Kutaska is to help them continue building their capacity. So eventually, they wouldn't need an entity like Three Rivers to keep moving. And, and again, just looping back, the reason that we're doing this instead of Three Rivers just showing up here and, and offering to do this is that we want to build some local capacity. So there is a nonprofit developer in the region.
Essentially as well, maybe the key thing to note, when it comes to the actual operation of the project, the property manager we're working with, Trellis, has about 4,000 units of Lytec properties under management. So it's always a piece of who is performing which portions, so.
So who's the closest to the City of Virginia, I guess?
We're right in Grand Rapids, so we would be the closest.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm just going to throw this out there, but do you, are you guys experiencing any crime or drugs in your facilities?
So this again is where property management comes into play. If that happens, like it happens in the community, then that person can't live there. So it's a zero tolerance for illegal drug activity in all of our properties, violent crimes, major property destruction, and so on. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a question from Counselor Johnson.
Great.
Counselor Johnson, he's in the back. Counselor Johnson.
I'm back here running cameras, so. So first of all, I, I really appreciate that you've come here today and that, from what my understanding, the city has very, very little, if any, liability moving forward once the project starts. This is a totally separate from the city. The only thing we're going to be doing is plowing the street up to your parking lot, and you plow from there. So I appreciate that. Appreciate the idea of the, the rental rates. The slide with the local jobs is really informative. I think that really gives an idea of what we need. I sub in schools and I see paras who are working right up to, I think they work 31 and a half hours because it's not full-time, but they're making those kinds of wages. And then they're working another job. So they would maintain, and those are the folks that are looking for job, for work placement. I see this, you're really community-based, and I like that. I like the idea of how we're going to be moving forward. To me, this is the missing step between what our questionable landlords in town are and quality living. Like, we've got plenty of people who can start out and pay for what I live next door to, what we've been dealing with in this building for numerous, numerous months. I also like the idea that this will be the example to start following up here. This is, to me, this is one of the, the start of several, hopefully, affordable housing projects in the Quad City Laurentian Chamber area because we don't have any place to put people. They don't, they, they're, we're having parking complaints all the time because there's no place to park because a, a family of four, two adults and two kids has three cars and there's no place to park. This kind of solves a lot of those problems as we're moving forward, and I think it's a great idea. Your slide about the B3 requirements, we're very familiar with those, and they're getting harder and harder and harder. And so my concern would be that not moving forward on the project means that it makes it harder for you. B3 compliance between our new event center and what we need to do with the new public safety center has increased significantly, again, costing the city more money. So I appreciate that, that you are, that because there's state money involved, you also have to meet those B3 compliance. And quite honestly, the first thing that popped into my mind is you all have a much better plan than we have for Washington Manor. I mean, we're landlords, we raise rent yearly, and we don't have money to fix the things that need to be fixed. We're going to be discussing that later today. So I think that you are going to hold us to a higher standard when, on our buildings and the stuff we have because it's, it's definitely long overdue to get some new housing, and, and things that people can be proud to live in, instead of picking the least worst place to live. And, and that's what, that's the reality of what people like me went through 20 years ago, trying to find a place to live in Virginia. So I, I'm fully supportive, and I think that, that this is an amazing opportunity to move forward as a City of Virginia. The city's moving forward now. We need to be able to place people in, in safe, quality housing moving forward. So thank you for coming in today. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. So let's move on to the, to the next slide and get to the meat of the bones of, of where the site you're preferring.
Sounds great. So you can see that site on the bottom there. But just to tee up, Scarlett here was going to talk about that site. Just a quick summary, we want to be invited in. So these are extremely competitive, very expensive applications to put in to Minnesota housing. So we definitely, if you're interested in doing something like this with us, would be walking hand in hand with you as we move towards the application, and most definitely not in a situation where we're dragging you. So, so this is something that, that we're offering to you as a potential project. And if this looks like something you're interested in doing, we have some suggestions for some next steps, some feasibility work, and then coming back to you in February with some more detail. So I'm going to throw that out there, and Scarlett, you can talk about the site.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So as we've heard after the entire hour and 20 minutes, these are not only competitive, but they are complex. So there is a unique and very specific sense of scoring criteria to be able to bring in quality, multimillion-dollar development that will last through the decades. So one thing that I've found that's easier is to create some sort of frame of reference. So we're going to use a visual example. When we are talking with cities, we like to go through and kind of see, is this feasible? Is it possible? Is there something we can use as an example? If there is, we use one. In Virginia, we have the site on the Fourth Street corridor, okay? And when we're looking at this, it has a lot of the criteria that any developer would be looking at to make a competitive quality project happen within that. We have the extra 30% for it being in a qualified census tract. We have the proximity to existing infrastructure, proximity to existing amenities, the school, the grocery store, clinics. We do have a high walk score. We also have, you know, a suitable size, and primarily, it's largely shovel-ready for this site. And it's owned by the city. And also to its outside of the residential neighborhood, where we're not placing it right in, say, like Jefferson Park, right in the middle of Northside. It's in its own little area. And if we were to go back and take a look at the quality of how it's changed from the 1976 buildings, from the 1980s, these are quality buildings that can actually fit and become an asset. And it's a key thing to note that we don't want to take an asset away from Virginia. We want to build an asset with Virginia, for Virginia, and housing within Virginia. So we're going to have Isaac talk a little bit about timeline. Does anybody have any questions on the potential site or the preference of the site? No? No?
Ultimately, we've got to hand out with yourselves on some site characteristics. We absolutely, as Scarlett said, have a preferred site. That doesn't have to be the place the project ends up, though. There are a lot of things that we need to have fall into place. And typically, you know, Liz had asked a question, what communities are we working with? One of the asks I typically have for a community is to acquire the site for us. Because at the end of the day, if we form a purchase agreement with the city, it's not going to be one where we're taking control at all until we can guarantee we can actually build the project. So were we to move forward with the city on any site, we would be ultimately seeking to have some sort of security on the site in February or April. The main need being that when we go to Minnesota housing, before they're going to say, sure, we'll give you 10 million bucks, they want us to be able to say, yes, we're going to have a legal right to be able to develop that site into what's needed. So our hope would be to go back, work in-depth. Uh-oh, down again. Y'all have those slides on your own? So ultimately, the core thing for us is going to be, the ask would be to go back, work with your city staff, go through what we think are the actual possible sites in the community, and see what we can't come back with with a recommendation for a more specific project. Ultimately, for us, it comes down to a question of opportunity cost. Oh, excellent. Thank you, Brett. And we really, as I mentioned, only have capacity to move forward with one city. So right now, it is somewhat competitive. Grand Rapids and others are working to put together what incentive packages they can to assist us in achieving the scoring and points we need. What I want to note, though, is that Virginia is particularly well-positioned because you do have some significant geographic scoring at this point, and you have the qualified census tract. Leah had mentioned the qualified census tract earlier, and what becomes important about that is that essentially it allows us an extra 30% basis to the credits we can generate. Long story short, that allows us to build a, a higher development cost project with a lower ratio of debt, allowing us to make higher-quality choices today in the effort. So Virginia has a bit of a leg up over some of our other communities at the moment because of that, and also likely then requires less local contributions in some degree. That said, we likely will still require some, it ultimately comes down to some specific formulas, so we'd be able to work with staff and put together a much more specific ask. As you can see on your next slide for next steps, we would be looking to do some work onsite, determination and feasibility, and a talk through what preliminary commitment of TIF would look like, so the city could have a fully fleshed-out picture there. But to take us back to that timeline slide, our, our end date that we're looking at is July 15th. But well before then, and before we put in an application, we need a community that wants to say yes, and we'd be looking for that direction from the council for us to be able to work with your staff, come back in February if that, if this is something you want in your community. That's ultimately going to be the decision. If you say yes, if we can find a site, if we can secure that site visa, that site and determine that it is feasible, because at the end of the day, we won't do this unless it makes business sense for Kutaska to invest all the money it's going to take to make this project possible, which can be well over a quarter million to a million dollars, depending on what stage and when we actually get compensated for our efforts. But we'd be looking at probably starting construction in spring or summer 2024, and maybe having a project fully completed 12 to 24 months after that. So even if you guys said yesterday, everything went great, we'd be looking at late 2025, early 2026 to actually have a project leased up and operating.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I just was hopping on Three Rivers' website and was clicking on some of the, the buildings and the units, and it's being managed, it looks like they're all being managed by Lloyd Company in Mankato.
Yep, you got it.
And so do, are they boots-on-the-ground managing or are they managing from Mankato?
No, we have onsite property managers. So essentially, really briefly how they structure it, we have a regional manager, that's sort of the boss of a few properties that are in close proximity to one another. And then we have onsite property management staff that staff those sites. And then on top of the onsite, we have maintenance staff. So depending on proximity, again, the maintenance staff could be onsite, or they could be sharing maybe two buildings that are close to one another.
Okay, and then some of those looked like they were very older buildings, maybe 70s, some of them, maybe 60s on your website.
So we acquire and rehabilitate USDA RD properties that are, you nailed it, they are 70s and 80s.
Yep. And so, so how much new construction have you guys actually done?
Yeah, so 638 units. You're challenging me off the top of my head now.
Okay, but you've, you've had experience.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Okay. And then, so the, I have a question regarding the feasibility criteria that you were just discussing. Could we get a copy of what that feasibility criteria is? So if we do maybe look at other land options, we can understand what those criteria are that need to be met?
Absolutely.
Because you're, you're getting scored based on, you're getting points based on that feasibility.
Yep.
Is that correct?
So Scarlett's going to pass out essentially some of the project site characteristics we look for, then there's also a self-scoring worksheet.
That's in our packet. Yeah, okay.
Yep. So that has about 240 points that any project could select. And essentially, that gets into some very deep technical considerations that probably don't lend themselves best to a public presentation, but that we would kind of go over with staff. And essentially, we would make a number of selections there. They're ultimately going to be very site-dependent, and that's what determines for us what we think is going to be feasible, because we need to hit a certain score before we invest the funds in.
You can move forward on your end.
Yep, so, yeah.
Okay, and I just, I guess I want to just, on the record, have one other note that we have an existing development agree, we have an existing development agreement with a developer right by the Iron Trail Motors Event Center for a hotel slash, and I think this is going to be phased in, short-term or long-term rental units. So, and I think his, his projection was 40, 40-something units for long slash short-term rental, and then I don't know how many hotel units, 54? It's been so long since we've had that discussion.
Four?
For the Patel Group.
Yeah, right in that area.
Their development project. So the city is currently in a development agreement, not far from the location that you're kind of looking at. So I guess I'd like to understand where they're at with their project, how they're going to be moved, I believe, I think from our last conversation, Britt, they'll be moving forward with the actual hotel units first, probably phase one. Phase two then will be the actual long, short-term rental units. So I'd like to understand how many of those units are there, what's their feasibility and likelihood that they're going to continue? I think some of their funding is based on that as well. So I'd like to kind of get some of that information to understand when we already have a development agreement in place with a plan, we've created the TIF district for that developer. I need to understand what entering into a new agreement would mean for that existing development agreement that we have with the current developer there.
And it's on the same site?
No.
Oh, different site.
It's, it's half a mile away.
Okay, but it doesn't include, it's, your development agreement has nothing to do with the site that we were.
No, but the, the offering, the offering of the, the long-term or short-term rental units were very similar. We toured several of their properties of how they, how they conduct and, and what they, I guess, how they build out. So I just, you know, responsibility, I need to understand where our responsibility lies, what our commitments were to this developer as he moves forward, in terms of what he's thinking that, you know, the city has told him, yep, we're welcoming you for these long, short-term. And then how does this change if we enter into a development agreement with the competition, with someone who's actually doing fair-market housing, which is already under a development agreement with the City of Virginia?
Okay, I see.
So I, I need to understand that balance before I would be willing to say, let's go forward.
Sure. And just one quick thing, if I might just note, is that because this is affordable housing, oftentimes, we're not in the same market as market-rate housing. So we have different rent rates and often serving a very different population. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we have, we need some time to digest this, to talk about this amongst the council. You provided us a significant amount of information. Unfortunately, I have, I have had the opportunity, I think Counsel Freely as well, to hear your presentation before, and as we move forward with the project. I think it's an excitable project. We'll talk about that, what the feasibility is, and we'll determine if the, the location that you're requesting is, is amenable, or we'll look at maybe other opportunities, but we'll certainly research this, have some more conversation about it. We'll have more questions for you the next time we meet, and hopefully have a, a more educated and definitive perspective on how we want to move forward with this. But it's just this one piece of a larger puzzle of the housings that we need in Virginia. So thank you for that. Any other questions from the council before we close?
Mayor, if I might, we do have a few guests here from the Iron Range Resources and Rehabilitation Board and the HRA in St. Louis County Planning, who, if we might have a moment, to offer up a comment from them.
Thank you.
Actually, maybe I can tell you have a little apprehension today, Mayor. So maybe I'll just put it out there that I would be willing to meet with you or any council members. I have some experience working with Three Rivers. I've contracted with some other HRAs to provide them assistance. And maybe another time would be a good time also to talk about Section 8 vouchers and project-based vouchers, and how the HRA can partner with Kutaska and Three Rivers in this project to make their application stronger, if that would work.
Yeah, I think, I think that would work. I think it. Yeah, I think, I think that would work, I think this was, this is a larger conversation, would take up a significant amount of time, which we should, when we, when we meet and confer together, we certainly would ask all interested parties and parties with experience involved to come in, and you, of course, Dana, who has been managing our system, our boss manager and the others for a long period of time, your expertise and input is imperative as we move forward, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Brad Gustafson?
I'll be quick, Mr. Mayor, councilors, I'm Brad Gustafson, the Community Development Manager at St. Louis County. St. Louis County has been working with Cootaska Community Action for over 20 years in administering some of our home investment partnership funding, which is HUD entitlement programs through a consortium, which is the five county area. This is an incredible opportunity for the city of Virginia. The timing with, you know, getting rid of 42 homes on South Side and having potential 42 more low-income housing brought to the community is, is an incredible opportunity. This one project, or, you know, the hotel, if they're going to do any long-term, short-term or any other development, isn't going to fix the housing issue in Virginia. It's going to be a multi-pronged problem that needs to be addressed over time. You know, the, the location is perfect, it's, you know, they had mentioned it's walkable, you know, a lot of the employees at the college, school, dental offices, the hospital are right there. There's going to be close proximity to a daycare hopefully soon, right down the road. You know, so Virginia is a low-income community, and so this project will benefit housing for low-income people. You know, so we just held the Housing Summit in November, Councilor Johnson was there, and beforehand we had the communities fill out a survey, and Mr. Mayor was there. You know, 17 respondents said housing was a concern in their city. 88% said there's lack of housing, you know, and then the top three housing needs for their community was affordable housing, senior housing and market rate housing, so this would help address some of that. You know, the type of resources do cities need to complete housing is funding, developers such as Cootaska and Three Rivers, and grants and loans, which, you know, they have experience in obtaining. So I just wanted to, to share that. You know, the city's biggest developer right now is Habitat for Humanity, which they're building maybe one or two homes a year in the city of Virginia. To do 42 units would take 30 to 40 years, so again, this is another great opportunity. I think that was it.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Gustafson. I think we're all excited about the project itself. It's, we have to meet and confer, get it in one basket, get a consensus moving forward, and then determining a location, a site for this project, so thank you. Please, for the record, your name and the welcome.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name's Whitney Ridlon, I'm a community development representative at the IRRB, and, you know, the agency has been hearing from businesses across the region that housing is a major issue and a barrier to attracting and retaining workers. The agency is supportive of housing projects that support our region's employers and their workers. So I just want to say that we are here at the table and will be a partner in any housing projects that are community priorities in the city of Virginia, so, thank you.
And I don't think it's a big surprise that we'll be coming for you for some expertise and assistance. Thank you, Whitney. Okay, any other final comments from Cootaska before we move on to the next items on our agenda?
Thank you so much for having us, and we'll look forward to hearing from yourselves and city staff as you move forward.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Let's see, Scarlett, Leah, Isaac and Chris was on the line, thank you very much, and Whitney, Brad, and Dana, thank you very much. Councilor Johnson has a final comment or question. Councilor Johnson?
I would move, since this is a special meeting, to put this on the committee, the whole agenda for next week, so that we can get some answers to you folks as soon as possible. Our, the needs of the community have a timeline, whether or not you have a specific one, I feel like we need to get moving on this, and if it's not going to work, then you need to know, so someone else can get this benefit to their community. So I appreciate it, so, so I move that this be put on the committee, the whole for next meeting, please.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Johnson, moves to move this subject for discussion at the next committee home meeting, which will be this next Tuesday coming up, and the support by Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Motley?
Could I move to table this for further discussion? Or, can I make a motion to move this?
You can table a motion, yes.
Could I move to, make a motion to table this for further discussion?
You can, our point, our, our goal is to discuss it at the next committee, the home meeting, that would be the purpose of it, but you, you can, you can certainly make a motion to tables if you wish to do so, and we'll offer that motion in, in support if that's the case.
I would support the table motion.
Are you, you're moving to table? Councilor Motley moves to table, supported by Councilor Paulson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Call, please.
Yes.
Cuffey?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Freely?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Biondich?
Johnson?
No. Uh, what is it? Before, four against?
Sorry, two.
I'm sorry.
Five to two, five yes.
Five yes and two no, to table?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If you're interested, we can.
We will, thank you very much, we'll organize some kind of a meeting moving forward, but there's a table motion right now that's been supported, so we'll figure out another avenue for discussion in order to maintain some, some sort of a timeline to meet your requirements and requirements of the needs for our community. So thank you, everybody, for coming, it was really informative, same presentation gave us, and I had a lot of questions at that meeting, I thank you for the space for that, and again, today as well. So thank you very much, have a great day, stay warm, have a safe trip back. Okay, we'll move to item number two on the agenda, which is the appointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for a fire term ending November 22nd, 2027, and this is like a mayoral suggestion and appointment, so I'm asking for support to assign Dennis Hendricks to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for that period of time. Dennis Hendricks has a, is retired from US Steel with a, where he manages the properties of, of the US Steel properties, so I'm looking to proffer a motion to approve and appoint Dennis Hendricks to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority to replace an outgoing member.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson, moves to approve, is there support?
I'll support it.
Thank you, supported by Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, item number three on the agenda is a Personnel Committee meeting that was held on January 24th, 2023, the purpose was to meet and, and, and interview applicants, first 3A, is recommended by the Personnel Committee, the appointment of two members to the Park and Rec Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026. And it was moved and supported, moved by Council Freely, supported by Council Biondich to appoint Carly Gobats and Kristi Hill to the Park and Rec Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026. This is the recommendation based upon interviews, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Uh, was that, I'm sorry, was that? Councilor Paulson moves to approve those appointments, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. 3-point, 3-point B, 3B, appoint two to the Library Commission for three-year terms ending February 1st, 2026, was moved at the Personnel Committee by Council Biondich and supported by Council Freely to appoint Jan Peppa Jack to the Library Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026.
Were there?
Moved by Council Paulson, I'm sorry, Council Paulson?
Just clarification, are, are we taking each name individually, because there were two names?
I see just one.
Approved.
Oh, I'm sorry, where, where?
On that.
Yeah, two motions on that one, this is the first one, and then there's the, then there's the second one. No, well, there's two for the library, correct? Where do I have, where do I have the? Where are we here? There's, there's, there's only one, okay, is, is there another one? Okay, thank you, I see it's, I should have reviewed this earlier, but it's out of order here, so thank you. So the motion would be by Council Biondich and supported by Council Freely, and then in two different motions, two different, so I'll do the first one, thank you very much for the clarification, appoint Jan Peppa Jack to Library Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026.
I'll move.
Moved by Council Paulson, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Council Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then move it down, back down, moved by Council Freely and supported by Council Paulson to appoint Jean Blevins to the Library Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026.
Move.
Moved to approve by Council Paulson, is there support? Is there support?
I'll support.
A support by Council Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moved by Council Freely and supported by Council Biondich to appoint Merrick McReynolds, Helenon and Robert Henderson to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026. Moved to approve by Council Freely, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Here we have two separate motions here for the Department of Public Utilities, moved by Council Freely, supported by Council Biondich to appoint Charlie Bearbow to the Public Utilities Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026.
I'll move.
Moved to approve by Council Paulson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then moved by Council Paulson and supported by Council Biondich to appoint James Makowski to the Public Utilities Commission for a three-year term ending February 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Well, welcome to all the re-appointed commissioners and the newly appointed commissioners to serve on these committees, so thank you, we look forward to a successful and efficient, effective experience as board members, so tough jobs, but thank you for serving. Okay, the last item on the agenda is item number four, is to set a meeting with Iron Trail Motors and appoint a counselor to attend, so I think there's some questions, concerns and comments about this particular issue, so under item number four, it's open for discussion with respect to this, and we'll start over with Council Paulson, Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to ask, on item number four, if no action is taken, then what happens? It just fails?
Well, I think there was a request for a meeting, and so this was suggested that we set a meeting with Iron Trail Motors and appoint a counselor to attend, but setting the meeting and, and who attends and how that meeting is held is up for consideration.
Okay, so then, can, it's an item, it's an agenda item with a specific request, so if I make a motion that's not that request, is that acceptable? Okay, so I think I would make a motion to set a meeting with Iron Trail Motors and the parties that, that concern the contract for the naming rights, to attend a full city council, closed session, meeting, to conduct contract negotiations.
And a, a meeting to be set within a certain period of time, that, as soon as possible.
I would say as soon as possible, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so that's the motion, do you have that motion on the floor? Motion by Council Paulson to set a meeting date with Iron Trail Motors and to have a full council in attendance and discuss this meeting in closed session, is there support for that?
I would support that, is?
Support by Council Motley, further discussion, Council Motley?
Is it ever possible we could do it either super early in the morning or later in the evening, so I don't have to keep taking work off? I'm not trying to ruin it for everybody else, but if it's possible.
I think we drive the bus on this, with all due respect, so we can figure out, set a meeting anytime we like, and then invite Iron Trail Motors to that meeting, I think we'll have to find what dates are amenable for them to meet, but yes, we could certainly do that, Council Motley, to accommodate your schedule. So the question is, the motion's on the floor to set a meeting date, we haven't done so, but we'd like to have staff contact Iron Trail, set a meeting date with these criteria in the motion, and, and schedule it in the morning or in the early evening in conjunction with that, further discussion, Council Johnson?
I'm not going to agree with a closed meeting, I think anything we have to say belongs to the public, and I have no problem discussing in the public, so I will not support a closed meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you, Council Johnson, I respectfully disagree, and I'm going to support the closed meeting, because we'll come back in open session to discuss the very same things, but if there's some discussions, negotiations, strategies that come forward as a result of that, I think it's open up to the public, but I do understand your concerns with respect to that, Council Johnson. Thank you. So it has been moved and supported to set a meeting date, and then notify the council of the availability for that special meeting, and to accommodate schedules of all the councils, maybe set it for a morning or a evening, and, and of course have our, our city attorney, and with respect to the motion, could we ask the city attorney if this is the appropriate way in which to conduct a meeting with Iron Trail Motors, and if this is feasible to do so?
If council desires, then yes, we can.
Yes, that's correct, okay, very good, thank you. So we'll also have our, our, all parties involved to that meeting, including our legal counsel, so it has been moved and supported to set a meeting date for staff to determine what that meeting date is and for our availability, so it's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, one last point, I did have a conversation with our city attorney on Friday, and then just confirming that we can in fact go into closed session legally because it is due to contract negotiations, so that's what makes me feel comfortable in order to do that, I agree with Council Johnson, anything that I have to say, I can absolutely say it in an open meeting, but I think at this point in time, when it comes to actual contract negotiations, that our city attorney recommended that we could in fact go into closed session, so I am comfortable doing that, thank you.
Thank you, whether there's a meeting or not, you know, we'll come out in open session and disseminate to the public as well, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Roll call, please, Pam.
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Freely?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Johnson?
No.
Karen Zelli?
Absent. Motion carries, thank you. Okay.
Mayor?
There's nothing else that can be discussed except for what's on the agenda, so Council Paulson.
Well, I can't make a motion with, to do with anything other than what's on the agenda, okay, very good.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So, so thank you, nothing else to come before the council, special council meeting Not that I can, it matters if I change my vote, no, but I was reading. Not that I can, it matters if I change my vote or not, but I was remiss in the, in the motion with respect to moving the discussion with Cotasca over to the committee, the home meeting, I, I really wanted to vote for it, but I didn't, I, I voted the other way, so, but my vote has to stand the way it is, so, thank you. Nothing else to come before the special council meeting today, we'll stand adjourned, so you all can get to your comments.
Clarification on the, on an issue though, like when a motion has been made, a tabling motion can supersede that, then?
Tabling motion overrides.
Correct.
There's no discussion, we cannot talk about it until it's brought back up again.
Yeah.
Can't even, okay, I, I, yeah, I'm, okay.
Thank you, okay, we stand adjourned, at 10:54 AM, so you guys can get your, your current appointments, thank you, we stand adjourned.